Good afternoon, class. I'm going to C S two O eight, study section two. And today's class, we're going to be talking about constructors and destructors. And before we go into constructor and destructors proper, I want us to do a brief recap on what you have done before. Because it's going to be a sort of building block for us to learn what constructors and destructors are. So now let's start with defining a Java class. How do you define a class in Java? And the format for that is public class, then the name of the class. Then you have the attributes, the methods. So that is the way a class is being defined in Java. Don't forget that when you have public, it's talking about the access modifier, which can either be public, private, public or private. But for this, for defining a class in Java, we have the public class. Then you have the name of that class. So this is an example where you have the class Person. So this is an example here, the public class Person. Then you have the attributes, the attributes here having access modifier private and the variable being declared. The variable here is the age and the data type of the variable is the I N T, which is the integer data type, since age will give us number. Since age is a number rather, so the data type used to be I N T, which is integer data type. Then you have the method, public Person with parentheses, nothing, no parameter in the parentheses. Then you have the age equals in dot next int, then public void say age, which is also a method in system dot out of print. So this is an example of a class being defined in Java. Then this is another example of a class Person. This is just going to print out, it will display, I don't want to say hello, I don't want to say hello. This is what this program will display. It's also an example of a class, the class Person. That's why you have probably class, class Person. The Person there is the name of the class, the class name. The class name is Person. So this is another example of a class in Java. Then now let's go on to define the attributes of a class in Java. How do you define the attributes of a class in Java? When you are defining the attributes of a class in Java, it can either be a variable or a constant. Attributes, the attributes can either be variable or constants. So we have the format there is, or you say the syntax. The syntax is access, you have the access modifier, you have the type of attribute. Then you have the name of the attributes. Attribute is talking about the characteristics of the class, of that class. Or we say the attributes are the data, that is, is that data that describes each instance of the class. The data that describes the instance of the class. An example is the Person, the class Person, where we have the access modifier to be public. We have the class and the class name Person. Then the attributes now is the age. The age is telling, is the, is the data that describes the class Person. So, and we have the type of attribute is that, that's talking about the data type, which is the integer. Then let me explain more about this access modifier. Although we have already talked about the access modifier in a former class, just a reminder. The access modifier told us we have the public, told us we have the protected, we also have the private. When you have public, that means it can be asked, the variable can be accessed everywhere. Can be accessed everywhere since it's public. Then if it's protected, that means it cannot access anything outside that package. It will not be able to access anything outside that particular package in which it has been declared. Then if it is private, the variable will only be available in the class where it has been declared. To only be available in that class where it has been declared. Like this is private, so it will only be available in this Person class that it has been declared. So that's talking about defining the attribute of the class in Java. Then defining the method of a class, although we are still going to go into method, but let me just introduce us to this. So defining the method of a class, how do you define the method of a class? The format or the syntax is access modifier, the return type, then the method name. And this can have, you have parameters in the parentheses. Can have parameters or we can call them arguments. So these are parameters, that's why you have P one type, P one name, P two, that's parameter. Can have parameters, the type of the parameter, then the name of the parameter. Then this is, if you come across, you still come across it by the time we go on to different examples. So just take notes of this syntax. When you see something like this, you know that that's the method. So, and you have body of the method. Look at an example here where we have the access modifier public. That's the class Person, then the method definition. The method definition here has the access modifier public, meaning that the method can be accessed everywhere. So we have the public and the return type we have here is void. Void, don't forget, I've also told us about this in one of our classes. And when you have void, that means it does not return any value. It will not return any value. Then you have say age, say age, there is the name of the method, that's the method, that's the name of the method. Then it doesn't have any parameter. And this is body, the, the, the system dot out of printing means that it will display my age is. So, 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 so that is defining, that is how the method of a class is being defined. Then now let's go to parameter passing. Parameter passing. Parameter passing, you have the parameter type, the format and the example. And we have for, or let's just go to the one for objects. For objects, you can have the method, then the class name. The method, then the class name, like the last example, we saw say age. So that's the method, the method is trying to get the age, that say, then the, say age. So now let's go to return values and the different types we have. So for object now, the return, for, let's go simple types, we have the type and the method. So an example is when you have, the type can be it, that if is going to return a number. That's the integer. And remember, we have different data types. We have different data types, can be integer, can be, it can be integer, it can be car, which is character, it can be byte, it can be boolean, it can be float, it can be double, it can be long. So take notes of this, we have different data types. Done this in one of your courses in hundred level. Then we also have methods. What do we call methods? Those are possible behavior of an action for each instance of a class. And when we say instance of a class, we are talking about the objects. So the methods are the possible behaviors. That is how you get to know, when you see a program, you get to know that, okay, this aspect is a method. Like for human being, a method can be walk, talk. If for bed, it can have fly, for fish, you can have swim. So that's talking about, the method is talking about the possible behavior or action of each instance of a class, that's, that means of an object. Since we have said, we have known that the instance of a class is an object. So the possible behavior or action for each object is the method. That is the method, that is how we get to know the method. You see this, by the time we go to different examples. Now let's go on to object instantiation. We have talked about this in our last class, so that's why I said just a recap. So objects are instance of a class. Then when you create a class, when after creating a class, it's called object instantiation. Object instantiation have told us about this. And the syntax for creating objects of a class is class name. Have the object name equals new class name. You have that class name, you have the object name, then the new, you have the keyword new, then the class name. Instanciation is creating a new instance or example of a class. Instance of a class are right to object, and this is the format or you say syntax. This is an example here, Person Jim equals new Person. And you have parentheses, followed by semicolon. When you see this Person, that's a class name. Then Jim is the instance name. That instance of the class that you are creating is a Jim, that's Jim. Equals new, new is a keyword there, you have keyword new, then Person, that's the class name again. So this is an instantiation, this is an example of instantiation. So this creates, this Person creates new objects. And the variable name, the variable name that are new object that are creating is a Jim, is Jim. So when we also, we also, I want us to also know instant variable. I'm not even knowing now because I've already told us about instance variable in our last class. So just a recap, because we are going to be coming across this in the constructor. So instance variable are the attributes of the class, they are the attributes of the class. When we say instance variable, they are the attributes of the class, it tells us more about the class. The data that are describes, they are the data that describes each instance of a class. So they are the instance variable. The instance variable was initialized to their default value before they are used. And this is the syntax for declaring instance variable, we have the data type and the variable name. So you can add in age, that's an example. Then now we can also have is, um, instance variable being declared in. You can also have instance variable declared inside the body of a class. Can have instance variable being declared inside the body of a class. And the syntax for that is access modifier, data type, then the variable name. The access modifier will restrict where the variable can be used. Like I said, we have the access modifier private, we have the public, we have the protected. The public will be used everywhere, to be as, available everywhere. But for the private, it means that the variable will only be available within that class that it has been declared. Now let's go into constructors, constructor. When we say constructor, what do we mean by constructor? Constructor is a method that has been provided by Java that executes each time an object of a class is created. When you create an object of a class, when there's an instantiation. Constructor is provide, is a method that has been provided by Java that executes. It would be invoked once an object of a class is being created. And these constructors are used to initialize the state of an object. They are used to initialize the state of an object. They also, there are special methods that are used to initialize this new object of a class. New, they are used to initialize a new object of a class. Constructors are used to initialize objects as they are created. And so once there's a creation, once you initiate an object, once there's an instance of a class, constructors are always being involved. And that's why we said there are special methods that are used to initialize a new object of a class. They are used to initialize a new object of a class. And during object instantiation, during object instantiation, the new keyword is used to invoke the constructor. We use that keyword new, that keyword new is used to invoke the constructor. That's why you saw in the last, in the last example that I gave us, that we saw new class name. So that keyword is used, when, once an object is being instantiated, that new keyword is being used. It's used to invoke the constructor. Then one thing I want us to also put in mind about a constructor is that if you don't want default variables of an object to take on default value, you must always create your own constructor. If you don't want default values, you don't want the variable to take default values, you must create your own constructor. Because once there's an initiation, once there, there's object initiation, instantiation, rather sorry, once there's object instantiation, is all a default value is being given. Hmm, a default value is being given. But if you don't want default, don't want default variables of an object to take on default values, you must create your own constructor. You must create your own constructor. Then now let's go on to constructors. We have talked about this, every class has a constructor to make its objects. And I've told us that we use in keyword new to call a constructor, or to say to invoke a constructor. Use the keyword new, like we can see here. Secretary calls new employee. You can write your own constructors, but if you don't, Java will provide a default constructor with no arguments. I've told us about that, with no argument, like this now, it does not have any arguments. Arguments that he's talking about is like in secretary calls new employee. By parentheses, there's nothing in the parentheses, that means it does not have arguments. So it sets all the fields of the new object to zero. Sets up the fields of the new object to zero. Then what are the syntax for constructors? The public class name and the parameter. That will be in the parentheses, that's the syntax for creating constructors. We have the public, the class name and the parameter. The public is being always used because most times the constructor who still has to be used somewhere else. Don't forget, we said for access modifier public, it can be, it can be accessed everywhere. So for constructors, most times we use the public access modifier because most times it will be used somewhere else. So then there are some things I want us to know about. We do not use a return type, do not use a return type and a name. You only use the class name, that's why we have in the syntax, public class name. You don't use a return type and you can supply arguments, you can supply arguments. And these are the things I want us to know about constructors. Then another thing about constructor is that constructors are similar in a way to method. They are similar in a way to method, but they are different, they are not the same thing. So once the attributes for constructor are, constructors has no return type. It has no return, that's why we said do not use a return type. It has no return type and it cannot even return void, unlike method. Method has a return type and it can return void. Don't forget the example, please, format I gave us the other time for method. So a constructor has no return type, then a constructor must have same name as the class. It must have the same name as the class. But for a method, we are talking about those things, the things that makes a method and constructor difference. They look alike, but they are different. Method have a return type, even if it's not returning any value, it must return void. So therefore constructor, you don't use a return type. Method don't have the same name with a class, but constructor have same name as the class. And that's why we said the syntax for creating constructor is the public, the class name, then the parameter. Then you have constructor body, that's things that will be under the constructor, under the constructor. Now move on to, okay, let's still talk about the constructor. For a constructor, we can have a constructor with no parameter. And we can also have a constructor with parameter. When we have a constructor with no parameter, we call that no argument constructor. Then when we have a constructor with parameter, we call it's argument constructor. So take note, a constructor may either have parameter or it's not have, it's might not have a parameter. And that's why you, why we saw in the syntax that it showed us earlier on in the last slide. The syntax, you notice we have in the parameter, we have square brackets in param, in. We have the parameter in square brackets, which shows that it is optional. It can have argue, a parameter, it can have arguments rather. Or it can be with arguments or without arguments. So it's not compulsory. So that's why we said we have two types of, we have two different constructor. We can have the no argument constructor and we can have the argument constructor. A no argument construct, a no argument constructor initialized the object specified in the constructor's body, it will initialize the object that is specified in the constructor's body. The no argument constructor is also different from the default constructor because it may return the default value of an object instance variable. The value it returns now depends on the constructor's body, did you get that? No argument constructor is different from the default constructor because it may return the default value of an object instance variable. Then the value, there is now returns, depends on the constructor's body. It depends on the constructor's body. And now let's go to how do we create a no argument constructor? How do we create a no argument constructor? A no argument constructor initialized the objects. It's initialized the objects as specified in the constructor's body. Now let's look at an example of a class that has no argument constructor. A class that has no argument constructor. In this example, we are creating a class that has instance variables or strings and integers. The strings and integers are telling us the type of variable, the type of the variable. So which, we are talking about, the, the example here now is talking about a class that has instance variable of strings and integers, which can respectively store a student's first name and age. First name, we know the data type for first name is string. While the, for age, the data type is integer, that's why we said it's a class that has instance variables of strings and integers. So now looking at this example, in the, in this example that we have here, the public class, students class is an example, is that is a class, that is telling us that it's a class. The access modifier user is public, then the class, the class name here is the students class. That's the students class. Then the instance variables here are the private string first name. That first name is the instance variable, we have the private, it's being, the access modifier use is private. Then the data type is a string, then we have the instance variable first name. Then the second very instance variable that we have is the age, which is a private int age. Then now let's go to the constructor, the constructor, the constructor. Sorry, the other time I said in the instant, no, this, the private string first name. That is the, they are the variables being declared, the variables of that students class. As the attributes of that students class, we have the first name and we have the age. So now the public students class that we have next, this is the constructor. This is now a no argument constructor, public students class, parentheses. Nothing is in that parentheses that is telling, telling us that this is a no argument constructor. And in the body of the, body of the constructor now, we have the first name equals Grace. The first name equals Grace and the age equals twenty five. The first name equals Grace and the age equals twenty five. These are the instance variables, the instance variables. The, these are the instance variables that we have in this example, telling us what the first name is, Grace. And telling us what the age is, twenty five. So these are the instance variable. And we have methods here, the method, we have the set method here. And we also have the get method, the second, when you get to the second slide, we will see the get method. Don't forget, we talked about who set or an access source. So the first, the public void set values string my name is my age. This is the set method, this is the set method. While if you go to the second, the next slide, we have the get method. We have the public string get first name. That is the second method that we have in this example, get method. And this is a program that uses a non default, no argument constructor to change the default values of instance variables, it to change the default value. So in this program that we have seen, two private instance variables of type string and int with names, first name and age are used. I've told us about the type, the variable types, we have the string and ins with their names being first name and age. And in this example also, no default, no argument constructor was created immediately after the instance variable declaration. Immediately the instance variable have been declared. And where it was declared is the private string first name, private int age. That place is talking about the declaration of the instance variable. So immediately after the, 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 after the declaration of the instance variable, we have the no argument constructor. And that's why I told us earlier on that we have public students class. Public students class with parentheses, which is showing us that that is a constructor. And the instance variables are now initialized in the body of the constructor with first name equals Grace and age equals twenty five. So this is an example of a class that has non default, no argument constructor. So now let's move on to example two. Where, where we are going to be making a constructor behave like a default constructor. I'm going to be making a constructor to behave like a default constructor. It, making a constructor behave like a default constructor. And in the, in this example now, in the body of the constructor, the instance variable will be initialized to their default values. When you look at the body of the constructors, the instance variable will be initialized to their default values. And how does that happen? Because the body of the constructor is empty. And where do we have the constructor here? We have, the constructor is the public students class two parentheses. This is, and in, after it, we have parentheses, opening and closing parentheses. And in this, we don't have anything, the body is empty. So with this now, we have made this constructor to behave like a default constructor because the body of the constructor is empty. Body of the constructor is empty. The instance variable of this class is initialized to their, will be initialized to their default value. And the instance variables here are the first names, the age. We can see that the difference between this example two and example one is that the, for the first example, the example one, the first name was initialized to be Grace. Then the age was initialized to be twenty five. But here, there is nothing like that, we don't have anything like that. So this, in this example here, we are making this program to return to, to initialize their default values. So this is example two, where we make a constructor behave like a default constructor. A constructor to behave like a default constructor. Now let's go to creating an argument constructor. How do we create an argument constructor? Then don't forget that an argument constructor is a constructor that is involved with arguments, that is involved with arguments. This list is data that needs to perform the task in the parameter. So it is the data in that parameter that is used to perform whatever task that it needs to perform. So I want you to take notes of this, when a new object of a class is created, when you have a new object of a class being created, the data is placed in parentheses that follows the class name. That is, the constructor of the class is called with that argument. The constructor of a class is called with that argument. And looking at this example, we have the prior, pop the public, this is declaration of the, defining a class. Pri- pub, the public, this is declaration of the, defining a cla- the class, public class, the class name is students class three. And now we are declaring the variables in the. Student class three, we have the first name which data type string, and the age which is data type int. Then now, we have the constructor, we have the argument constructor. Don't forget that the argument constructor is a constructor that is. Invoked with arguments, this have argument, look at this now, for this, we have the public student class three. Then in parentheses, we have this string my name is my age, these are the arguments. And that is what makes this an argument constructor, these are the arguments, that they are the data that the. The that, the program will use to perform the operation that it needs to perform. And the data type for the name is going to be string, while the data type for the my age is going to be int. It's going to be int, so this is an example of an instance, of an argument constructor, because it's has. Arguments in the. Constructor, the construct, the constructor of this class has parameters. It's has parameter that accepts, the parameter accepts a string value and an int value as the data. The constructor body now sets the instance variable of the class to the value in the parameter. Value in the parameter, we call this parameter, the, I've been calling it parentheses, so it's called parameter, so the. Instance, the constructor body now sets. The val- the instance variable of the class, don't forget, I told us that the instance variable is the first name. Then the age that has been declared earlier on before the constructor. So now, the constructor, this is the constructor where we have the public student class three, then parameters, where we have the. Argument in the parameters, string my name is my age, so the. Constructor now sets the instance variable under the body of the constructor. Set the instance variable of the class to the values in the parameter. Where we have first name, that's the instance variable, equals the value in the parameter, my name. Then the second instance variable age equals my age, so this is an example of the. Con- argument constructor, an example of the argument constructor, and going on, we have the method. Public string get first name, that's a method, then this, another method we have is public in get age. Don't forget, when we were talking about the difference between method and constructor, I told us that the method will return a value. So that is why this is returning, return first name. Return a metal, return a value, it's return first name, it's using the gets. As said, it's using that gets method, the gets method. Then we have the public in get age, which is also a method, then it will return, return age. So that is an example of creating an argument constructor. Now, let's go to constructor overloading, constructor overloading, when we say constructor overloading. What do we mean by that? When multiple constructors are used to initialize objects of a class in different ways, we call them. We call that overloaded constructors, so when multiple constructors. Are used to initialize objects of a class in different ways, they are called overloaded constructors. So about load constructors, you provide multiple constructor declarations with different signatures, with different signature. And in Java, there's a way that signatures are differentiated by the compiler. That differentiated by the compiler, by the number of parameters, I've showed us the last example, what I mean by parameters. The values that we have in the arguments that we have in the, that's what I call parentheses, they are the parameters, so. The signatures are differentiated by the compiler, by the number of parameters, the types of parameters. The, and the other parameter types in each signature. Then now, let's move on to example, an example on overloaded constructor. This is an example of overloaded constructor. The class there, the decl- the first thing is the class declaration, which we have the public class, the class name, the class name is time class. Time class, and in this, we have the instance variable R minutes seconds. Then we have the constructor, public time class with no. Arguments, then I want you to take note, in this example, we have four constructors. We have four constructor, the first one is a public time class where there's no parameter. So that is no argument constructor with no parameter, then the second one is the public time class. In the hour, that's the second constructor with arguments. The arguments there is the par- with parameter, it has parameters, which is the hour, then the third one is the. In the minute, time, public time class is the hour in the minutes. So this is another constructor with two, this is a two argument constructor, because it has. In the hour and the minutes as the parameters, so we have two. Argument constructor, then we also have, that the third one, then the fourth one is the. In public time class, the hour, the minute, the seconds, so this is the fourth constructor. That we have in this example, so that's why we said we have four constructors. This is the four constructors, and don't forget, we are talking about more, we are talking about constructor overloading. Which is about how multiple constructors can be used to initialize objects of a class in differences, so that's why we have. Multiple constructors in this example, and that we have multiple constructors in this example. So this example is a time class that has. Three time instance variables with constructors to manipulate these variables differently. And what does this example, what does it do? It, it has a time, it has a class name, time class with four constructors. And all the constructors assign values to the time instance variables in the constructor body. They assign values to the time instance variables in the constructor's body. And we have method also, the get method, we have, we have the get method, the get method is being used here, don't forget, we have the. Get method and the set method, the get method is used to retrieve values, I've told us in one of our classes. Then the set method is used, is used to set values. So this method that we are using here is the get method, which is used to retrieve value. And what the get method here in this example will do is, the get method retrieve values of the three. Time instance variables, it will retrieve values of the three time instance variables. Don't forget that I've mentioned that the first constructor has no argument, has no parameter, so it's a no argument. Constructor, so that does not have any parameter, so, and that is why we are saying the get method will retrieve. Values of the three time instance variable for the other constructors that has parameter. And it will display the time method, it should display the time, using the displayed. Display met- display time method, now it will display the time method, and it's on string value. And it's on a string value that shows this, the time parameter in two digits. To show the time parameter in two digits, which are going to be separated by a comma. According to what we have in return, string dot format, this is the format showing that it's going to have two. Digits that will be separated by a comma, so this is the example of. A constructor overloading, then now, let's go on to destructors. When we say destructors, what are destructors? Destructors are used for tying up the computer's memory, they are used for tying up the computers, tidying up the computer's memory. And we can also say a destructor is a special method, typically used to perform cleanup. After an object is no longer needed by the program, like you talked about local variables. When we're talking about the instance variable, we also talk about the local variables, so local variables activated within the body of the method. So when they are no longer needed, when these local variables are no longer needed, they are automatically deleted. And that is what we call destructors, tidying up. So that is why we said ti- detectors are used for tidying up the computer's memory, so. One thing about destructors is that, it's for example in Java, Java does not support destructors. But C plus plus supports destructors, C plus plus supports destructors, then there's something we call garbage. Collection in destructors, is a mechanism that Java use to return memory to operating system. When it is no longer needed, we call it garbage collection, so this. Is destructors, so we have talked about. Constructors and destructors in this session, in our next class, we'll move on to talk about static behaviors. Thank you for listening.